I'll order this February 10th meeting of the Council of the Town of Washington. And we've got an agenda for us.
I'm making a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve the agenda that's in.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it's approved. We also have the minutes from the January 13th meeting, the questions, corrections. Anything from the general?
[laughing]
General. Okay. All right.
Awesome.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. First off, for the mayor's report, I'd like to thank Gail and Brad for your help. As we went through the ice storm, we did lose power down at the water pumping station. We have about two and a half days with the water on the hill, so it wasn't a big concern. But Gail got us organized and Brad ran down to pick up the temporary generator and got us connected down there. So, thank you, Brad. Also, a good reminder about why we spent a bunch of money this summer to afford our new generator. Speaking of weather, I think the weather forecast for this weekend is pretty crummy, so I'm going to push off our usual President's Day reception and suggest we do something all the way to the spring unless there's some strong objections. And then, on the ski limit sign, we should still be on track to see something in the next few weeks. Be dealt with as well as various other weather-related issues. But if the last of the paperwork's done, we can speak to them by the end of the month. The Rush River Commons, they're working through the last little bit of their paperwork for certificates of occupancy, so we hope to see folks start to move into the apartments down there in March, late March, probably early April would be great. And then, in other sort of about-town news, I guess we could be heading into quite an interesting building phase in the spring, perhaps Mr. Abdo and his team are working through the paperwork on the old newspaper property on Main Street and, of course, finishing up things with their plans for the barn. We could see them begin to do some work in the next several months. So, they've got to work, I think they want to take the whole thing off at once. There's some process associated with getting the newspaper building upgrades improved so I can become part of the White New Saints.
When you said the barn, you mean the package?
Package, yeah, I'm sorry. Pardon me. And we'll cover it for the mayor's report. Barbara, not many.
You want to have to take over whatever.
Nothing to report? I just keep standing. Forgiving.
In line with the budget.
Getting Debick hired for Brad to go get a generator temporarily.
And I will apologize for a little IT issue this evening, so I'm going to have to, you know, I won't do an interpretive dance, but I will repeat what Martin is telling me as part of the turn because our speaker's not working tonight, so, Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. My two and just report on one is the voluntary settlement agreement hearing on April 4th. Rush River will not be presenting that. They're not party to the case, so I would present it back to town.
So, the hearing on the completion of the baloney adjustment, it will be, it's April, Martin? April 4th. Martin will be presenting that to the judge. Barbara and I will be the attendants representing the town. And hopefully we'll wrap it up. And what's the usual anticipated decision time after that?
It varies. This judge, probably a month or six weeks.
Okay. So, a month or six weeks after that, we should have a final.
And the second thing I was reminding the council on is that modern service connecting base and the government agenda have to be fair and be with a very broad standard.
Thank you. We pride ourselves on being fair on everything. Thank you, Martin. Anything else?
No, sir. Any other questions?
Thank you. Mr. Guyers, you couldn't join us tonight because of anything, but you do have his report here. I think I covered some of the highlights in the mayor's report. If there are any questions, happy to take those later. Madam Chair, any report for the planning question?
Thank you, yes. A couple of things. First of all, we elected our offices, in this case, we re-elected our offices.
Miserrations.
So, I remain the chair. Gene Kaufman is the vice chair and Connie Bruce is our secretary. And then we discussed two issues that are not completely unrelated. The first one is water and sewer in the sense of making sure planning and everybody has a quarterly update on exactly where we are on consumption. As you know, we've always said we're underused, but we've had so much to acknowledge. We have Rush River One, we have the spa, we have extra rooms, and eventually we'll have co-towns. We think it's very important that we have a, in real-time, sense of how much we're actually getting close to the threshold. And as everybody knows, once you reach 80%, you have to, which in the end insists that you put in place some kind of backup system. And we don't want to end up with a whole new bomb and a whole new system. So, we're also recommending that the forms for new builds, when people apply for an SGP or planning permission, contain a section where the applicant puts in their anticipated usage of water and obviously demands it served. That's the first thing. Second thing is, everybody will remember that the last time we did a comprehensive plan was 2017. They're meant to be five years. In 2022, we decided to reaffirm the comp plan. The comp plan had a lot about boosting the population, which we're doing through Rush River One. Given how much change there's been in the town, we've been hearing a lot of feedback from residents that they think it's time to kind of do a stand-back and say, let's have another comp plan and see what the next stage of the model is. Do we want more housing? What way do we want to go? So, we would propose, and you and I have had some communication, that we start that process now. And that would involve some public meetings with the public. The timing is good. People will see Rush River One. They'll have an opportunity to react to how they feel about that. And we can take it from there. Anticipated, it'll take about six months. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Arby?
The other matter of the chair. Yeah, so the ARB did also go through reelections. And we maintain myself as chair and Wesker as vice chair. We do have a new secretary, and that has relinquished her position. And Ryan will be stepping in as secretary. And as you can see from Steve's report, we have quite a lengthy agenda for our last ARB meeting. There were a number of different applicants that we approved with some probably lots and notes and additional clarifications from the different applicants. I can read through some of these in terms of new business. We had most of the applicants were new business. The old business was just assigned for Montevideo on Main Street. And then, of course, we had two applicants from the island of Little Washington that were approved, the fence at the Parsonage, and then also the new spa building. We did have a new metal roof on the other side of Gay Street, as well as the pedestrian bridges that are going to go in at Rush River Phase One. And then I think that was mostly it. Oh, we did have a retained long fence in lighting. That was in June. It was a very long meeting for those who are with us. And then I think we have a pretty light agenda coming up in terms of our next meeting, just one application.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for continuing to serve the truth.
There's supposed to be potential for a lot of snow tomorrow. Are you going to call the meeting?
I mean, it's never.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, we are not calling an extra gathering.
That's right.
So, I'd like to give you even more detail to clarify what I consider. So, as the mayor said, with the ice storm, we did lose power at the pump house. Lines came down on Harris Hollow, just inside of town, near Judy Sarno's house. I went down to the treatment plant, met with the ESS folks to ask what the status was, where we were at. We had 125,000 gallons of water in the town, which would serve us for about three days, based on our general consumption. We made a decision, Gail and I talked, that even though we had that much water and that we're pretty certain power would be restored pretty quickly, because fortunately, one of the ESS employees' wives works for Rapellectra. So, he made a plea to her, get us moved up, because he didn't want to be on the receiving end of, hey, there's no water in town. So, that got done. But in the meantime, we did get a generator. We have rented it for four weeks, in anticipation of this wave of storms that is coming through in case something goes out again. I hope that we don't have to use it, but it's there. ESS is getting it all set up and wired. They were doing that Friday when I brought it in. The new generator is in Richmond. We are just simply waiting for enough decent weather to get the concrete pads poured, meaning one for the generator and one for the propane. Soon as those are poorly ready, the contractor's ready to go, we'll get that installed pretty quickly. We're also going to add a little improvement in the life-hang system, which should improve the longevity of the pump plant. So, that's that. Also, during the power outage, power was out at the wastewater plant. We have a rather large substantial tenement down there. It was running. The line that went down was actually on the other side of 211. And so, I met with the line crews, and they were working diligently. And they, fortunately, got that up and running. But now that we've passed through that, we need to go take a look at the fuel level, because that generator does eat diesel fuel. So, that's going to need new fuel. The other thing, the treatment plant, most things are running pretty smoothly, but we do have an issue with one of the air raiders. So, over the weekend, I worked through a new design to replace the floats, because the floats are old. They're the ones that were in there originally, and they are apparently leaking, so there's absorbent water, and it causes the area to pitch at a pretty steep angle, and we can't have that. So, I'm going to be with the ESS, share with them what we intend to do. And with their blessing, we're going to try and get that. Do we have an approximate date on that, Barbara?
As soon as you tell me.
As soon as I tell you, okay. So, because we have some materials to order, modifications that we had with someone today. We've got a little bit of welding that'll have to get done on-site that day. But I think it's something we can do in one day, and we'll bring that basin back up. So, it's something that has to be done, because if we don't do something, we could impact our water quality.
The water quality of the stream, not the water quality?
Well, water of the stream, yeah. Yeah. So, hopefully we should get that done. Other than that, both systems are running pretty good. We do have work that's going to be coming up in the spring. Unfortunately, our systems, you know, they're reaching a point of age where we have to put more of that in.
Thirty years of not routine maintenance.
Right. We're taking a much more proactive, rather reactive approach to things. For example, we had a break in water line just across the street from Steve Kreizer's house. We had a contractor come in to repair that, but they had to run out to get parts, because they didn't have the right saddle that you put around the pipe. So, now we've got is a list of repair parts, and we're going to try to start acquiring those so that when we run into a break, it'll all be in the container that's at the wastewater treatment plant. So, this should affect repairs in a much more diligent manner. We can get those repairs affected much quicker.
And I thank Barbara for working with the team to come with that list of repair parts that we're going to work. Thank you, Barbara.
Yeah. So, but everything's, I'd say, everything's running the way it should right now. Do you want?
I have very good news to report, Mr. Mayor, that we've gotten our funds in for the trail. So, I talked with Brock Lowery, and he is hoping to start in the beginning of March. And he hopes to have it completed before the end of April. So, there are numerous people to thank. Mr. Walton, the PATH Foundation, and the Krebser Fund through the Piedmont Environmental Council for their contributions, as well as to Mr. Mitchell for allowing us to go across his property, the county, for allowing us to go across their property, and Mr. DeBerg for allowing us to go across his property. Very excited. So, hopefully, those new residents won't have to wait long. New residents from Rush River won't have to wait long before they can walk up to the rest of the town.
More importantly, Nancy won't have to wait long, of course, and all will have a review. Thanks for shepherding this to a final conclusion. Okay. So, on the new business side, we've got an item on there for a request to purchase town property located behind 41 Mount Haynes Avenue. There is a package that each of the members of the council have, and I think there's some out there for the public. On page four of that, there's a colored green section there illustrating where this particular lot is. It's... I guess not. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I thought it was going up there.
This parcel is basically directly north of the currently exploding water plant. Just up the hill over the area.
This is yours, I'm going to sit here.
Works out to about, I think, 0.20 acres in size of the lot. It's about somewhere between 9,000 and 10,000 square feet. It is completely behind the address on the sale on, and sort of between it and Elon Hall. The question I have to the council tonight is a simple procedural question, which is, would you like to proceed to starting the process to sell the property? That process would involve, sort of, we ran through this with our esteemed counsel, but if we move forward tonight, then we will decide on what sort of package we want from the potential purchasers. We'll have to hold a public hearing, and then obviously advertise that it's being open for a bid. We receive sealed bids that would then be considered by the council in closed session, and we'll choose one of those bids. Martin, any... I think that... Okay. All right. So, any questions open to the council then to discuss?
Can we set an amount, like a minimum amount, that is acceptable? Can we just accept any?
Minimum amount? Yes. We can set up.
I would really love to see a larger survey of this area, so that it depicts where the treatment plant is, those valuable sites, where people fall in, about where they are, and the adjacent neighboring properties to this one.
Yeah, it's Elon Hall. People petitioning us and our property are the only adjoining properties. We can certainly zoom in on that. I don't think we're interested in paying for a survey of it. And obviously, the purchasers would pay for a survey at the end of this. And we can sell.
Have a general sense of how much land is between.
Barbara, we should have somewhere in a multitude of acres. We have exactly that.
There are surveys that exist.
There was a survey, a survey that we had. I know the property well, you used to say.
Yep. The one question I would have is that right now, it's one parcel of 5.28 to 4 acres. It includes Leggett Lane. It includes the water treatment plant. So, it will also include part of the new trail that we're going to be establishing. And so, while I don't...
We're not looking at selling that whole lot.
I agree. So, I think part of what we have to do is figure out what portion that we want to sell. How do we identify and how do we find it?
I think I would want it to go to the more conditionless buy, which is 0.20 acres identified on this. I don't think we're interested in selling any more of the property than that, because it doesn't again include the wastewater plant at that point.
I guess, I would say that if this is being explored, we could also explore, since we're going to be going through this process. You're asking whether we should go through this process. Instead of just going through this one time, and then someone else may want to come and ask about another portion of that property, whether it's worthwhile to just have a total exploration of exactly what we want to retain, what we might be interested in selling.
That's a fair question. I'm not interested in selling any more of it, but if you'd like to explore broader, then I don't believe we want to go down that road.
Well, I think that's where, again, having a better survey map that shows that, so if this piece is a parcel, and then what is the remaining, and might that get divided? Again, I would love to see a better vision.
Suggesting we shouldn't have that.
Right. I think that should be part of it. Before we can make a decision, I would love to see that.
I don't think we're at any point of making a decision. This is just a discussion. And I think with what we're starting to look at, I think we can move forward on, yes, taking the plan, expanding the whole view, but we've had discussion over the years on what to do with that other property that's half of, that we have, the wastewater plant. And if I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sullivan. But I believe it was because of the, I'm going to say the weight of it again, the design, the way the land falls and everything, and all being so close to the wastewater plant. I believe it was agreed, when we looked at what we wanted to sell years ago, that that was not going to be part of it. Am I correct, or it goes back several years?
For those who were not here or those who don't remember, when the town decided it was going to sell Elon Hall, which it needed to do, that was a significant contingent piece of property to Elon Hall. There was much time and energy and other people's volunteer contributions that we laid out alternatives as to how one might develop, literally develop, the entire Elon Hall property, which there's a number of lots. And a lot of work was done, but it really was a big decision. Do you want, people want more housing, so do you really want development or don't? And we came to the conclusion that we really didn't want 14 houses on the Elon Hall property. We, whatever the number, whether it's like 14, 15, the different multiples. But when it came time to sell, I think our view of it was essentially that piece of property was an asset belonging to town. And the control over that asset was valuable, because someday you might decide you want to do A rather than B. And in terms of marketing of Elon Hall, there was added a cost to it. So, the potential buyers, there was not a lot of interest expressed in the market. But the fundamental thing was the town should keep control. That's in the center of the town. It's an asset. And so, there it sits. And it seems to me that, if I may say so, I mean, that's sort of the big... I mean, I'm not in favor or against this, but that's sort of the question, is this a town that want to gain control of what happens there, either through ownership or through control as to how it is sold, and what kind of restrictions it's going to give them. And then there's always the question, my interest. But that's sort of a big, that's a big concept sort of decision. So, what does one want? See that property used for? Does one want to maintain that control? One does it, or control it through the sales process?
If I can add to former Mayor Sullivan's comments, working with the Elon Hall Task Force and working with the council, there had been some talk about initially using that property as one of the potential uses to put some workforce housing, this is before Rush River ever came over. And it was hampered by the fact that D-Dot, if I recall right, Mayor Sullivan, D-Dot would not allow us to use the road next to the former magistrate's office as a way out for that, as an egress. And then, I remember Mr. Bennett saying it would be very difficult to try to get a road down towards Leggett Lane from there. So, we ended up with a piece of property, still has a value, which my sense is that we didn't really know what we wanted to do with it, and so we left it until later. I don't know if that agrees with what you...
Well, you're right. I don't remember all of it. The access to the property was an issue which something is solved, or you can't solve. But it was sort of, and the orders of number of other adjacent properties.
If you're taking into account the entire lot.
Right.
Question being asked. Any other questions, Rick Allen?
Do you like a motion that we, as a town council, explore? The issue of this parcel and kind of how we should go for it?
I would think that I would, I'll make the motion first. But I knew that the town council would move forward with consideration of the potential disposal of this point, this lot adjacent to the wastewater plant. And that as part of that process, we consider whether or not we would want to dispose additional land in that area. That's it. Any modifications?
Okay. Can you suggest for your report, disposal of the different... Disposal sort of implies some no value, exactly as a...
Disposition is not, is, disposal of is, does not mean inherent. I'm not making a judgment on value. Obviously, the town's going to proceed to get what the best possible market value for property. But disposing of property is disposing of property. I'm not suggesting we are going to give it away. There's certainly not going to be that. We will proceed with a sealed bid process once we are at the stage of that we finally made a decision to dispose of this particular parcel.
I guess the question that we have asking is, when you're talking about the parcel, you're talking about just this 0.2 acre parcel?
I think we should start there, but I modified it because you brought up the question of the whole half acre. And so, you know, if the council would like to consider its options for that entire, a larger parcel, which includes all the property around the wastewater plant, then we can have a debate. My preference would be limited to the question we've been asked, because I don't, having, being fairly familiar with that particular piece of property, and I've walked it before. If you head further south from the suggested border, you're getting far too close to the wastewater plant for my case.
I've walked it many times myself, and I'm not sure I 100% agree with you. But I would say if we can explore all the options concurrently, I would be there.
That's what I was trying to say.
Okay. Then I have a second.
Could you repeat the motions?
We're just, we're going to initiate a process to consider disposing of our real property, both with the lot that has been requested for us to sell and the property surrounding it that the town owns.
Portions of the remaining are for...
Yeah. If that makes sense.
So, will we accept a public hearing on it?
I think we'll have to have the discussion. We're going to have some work that the team's going to have to do to lay it out better, and then we'll have a discussion of exactly what we want to dispose of. So, probably a public hearing concurrent with our next town council meeting. Okay. We're all called votes, so all in favor, please anybody say aye.
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 Motion adopted. Thank you. All right, the other package you have for you is about our wastewater, water rates. Barbara, can you walk through your process for putting this together? You'll recall the last time we raised the rates, it was back in twenty-two. Time for a periodic revisiting.
What I did was, what I did was a review of our expenses from twenty seventeen to current. So you'll see in the package, you know, the water speed has gone up, the air rate, right, has gone up. For the water system, the last time there, the water rate each change was January one, twenty seventeen. So that's been seven years since there was change in the water system. On sewer system, it's been three years. You can see there, there's a breakdown of what our budget revenue is, budget expenses. On the water side, we're looking at thirty-three thousand, you take out the capital improvement project. And that's a deficit. And then on the next page, you'll see my recommendations as far as new water rates. And those are highlighted in yellow. If you follow my recommendations and increase the base rate and accelerator rate, it'll be an additional twenty thousand dollars of revenue, taking into account the eighteen new Rush River tenants that we'll expect. That's almost another six thousand. So with my recommendations on Rush River, that's another twenty-six thousand in revenue, just on the water side. Something else to note, on the water side, we have a total of a hundred and thirty-seven connections, including Rush River. Of those hundred and thirty-seven, eighteen of those are water only. They're outside the town boundary, you've supplied water to them for many years. And then on the sewer side, I did the same breakdown. The sewer deficit, after some discussions with Mayor Weddick, and taking into account some capital improvement projects, that one sixty-seven would really be a hundred, a hundred thousand even. You'll see there the expenses and the increases in those. Take special note, you'll be asking for this on the new budget, current pumps, about sixty percent. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for some money there. And then again, on the next page, you'll see in yellow, my recommendations for the base rate and the accelerator rate, including those two recommendations, plus the eighteen new customers at Rush River, those will all come to almost thirty-seven thousand in revenue, given our current usage. And so if those recommendations were to go into effect, the base rate, water bill, sewer bill would go from seventy-five to eighty-eight dollars. Any questions?
So this is really just informational tonight and to tell you what our treasurer, we'd like to wrap this discussion into our annual framing of the budget. So schedule likely a public hearing on sewer and water rates as part of our, as we cycle up to the G, the remaining budget ahead of June. So only a March or a full timeframe, a public hearing, given whatever business we may have before us about the rates and then we adopt them in line with the new budget. If we can make change.
Yes, it's almost March, which means.
I know we were about to start budgets, how does it go by so fast?
We may need to make a motion to have a public hearing about the sewer and water rates. Would you like a motion? I would so knew that we have a public meeting about the information regarding the rise in the water and sewer rates for the town of Washington.
Okay, just get a little bit of time, seems appropriate.
Schedule an appropriate time.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A little poll vote?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion's adopted. And I think.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Might you ask a question or?
Well, I'm getting ready to open it for the public forum, so if you'd like to preempt and go around here.
Just speaking as one person who's seen this for the first time, although I'm surely familiar with the concept of this. I guess it actually has to be a public hearing, but I've kind of been through this before, I fear a little bit that it would be good not to get in the situation where there's a public hearing and the public gets to speak about what they think, or they actually don't know it, roughly speaking, they don't know it. Which is to say they're not really familiar with the numbers. And, but, right. And so I'm just wanting, wanting to suggest as a matter of that process, before there's actually a public discussion, that there's more discussion or time given to the public to actually understand what the topic is.
We'll have to publish for at least one week, probably two, in the paper, the numbers you have in your hand. Drive that, but perhaps is there a larger advertisement? And certainly, I think we'll end up pushing it out a couple of months so we can put it on the agenda again just to make sure folks are, maybe to think about it. I don't know if there's a better way to publish it, I, you know, rate department, so. We can also include it in the town announcements in the, in the months leading up to include that analysis, of course, so folks are now available to that thematically.
Is there anything that would be helpful to help clarify this, do you think?
Well, I'll give you just a quick, I mean, I'm not frankly, I'm looking at this for a time. And this analysis looks really good, Barbara Crager, good. But for example, obviously the expenses have gone up dramatically. One example are lineups, significant investment, good investment, maybe, good idea. But that's sort of one time investment to five or six dollars in overall. So it's not ongoing.
But that.
Or is it? Let me rephrase it, maybe it is ongoing, but that would be a question like, okay, what, is that, is that really an operating expense? Is it your, your hours or what sort of, because what are the answers to that question sort of relevant to how long it takes? That's a question. I did pull that from out of the.
Well, just to give you a little background on that, we, all the pumps currently are by a company called E One. They came up with this concept of this force main system for sewage treatment, pumping and such. They held a patent on it, patent has since expired. There are now two other companies that make compatible pumps, use their system. We had purchased one of those pumps in order to try it to see if it may give us longer life, better performance, easier to maintain, whatever. So we are looking at potential ways to control that cost. A lot of the pumps that we have, there's a number of them that are some of the original pumps that were put in. It lasted that long because their service is that limited. And so they haven't been really pressed, but other locations have gone through pumps at a regular basis. Because we've been doing, Barbara, what, ten more or less than that?
No, less than that. We had a, we, we had a month, last month where it was one, it was seven. But we also maintain an inventory of new pumps and refurbished pumps. So we probably go through fifteen to twenty in a year.
If I may just say the same thing already, but, if you want to raise rates, and you need public support for that, the public really needs to know what's in the numbers. And so it seems to me that there's a process now that you want to make sure that you spend most time educating, just like the last, form this, sir. I'll just say this, before you really have the public knowing what they want, if nobody wants to raise rates.
John, do you or anyone have suggestions on how that gets done? Because educating the public or, you know, is creepy. Just putting a thing in the newspaper saying we're going to have a public hearing does not do that. So I don't know if it would be information on the website, but how many people go to the website?
This is where I suggested that it's part of the town announcements, we can push it to be part of the analysis, that's what we're using FAQs. I mean, we can also mail it to them, but, you know.
We can also.
The best we can, well, we can, we can do the best we can do, but at the end of the day, of course, we, we're not engaged.
And do you have any ideas, John, you put your own product about that, do you?
You may not can't just raise a question, I, I mean, I guess my answer would be, you sound sort of, you're a proactive processor. I just think before either, if you have, if the next meeting, you actually have a more thorough discussion about what's in the numbers and what's facing the town. And it's not going to shut up.
Right, that's part of the.
There's a lot of people here, so, and you can't get everybody to show up, they're not going to all know, but, but it's the. I don't know what I say.
It's part of the reason I want to wrap that into the budget discussion, because we'll be, part of that, we'll be discussing about the overall budget.
It's just a basis, I don't expect the public to put on something that nobody would be doing.
I couldn't agree more.
Roughly speaking.
So I, I want to make a similar point, but more related to the budget. I think, and I threw myself in this, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about where, where we sit with our budget. I mean, we all know that the food and lodging receipts have torn way up, thanks to large parts of the Palos and the Inn. And yet, you know, we have deficits and we know we've got the bond to pay off. But I think there would be a case for having a kind of teaching is too much, but on the budget, so that we really understand how much, how much capital we actually have on an ongoing basis to spend, to invest, the life of the bond, the issue about repairs, it's something we should, you know, those parts are all officials from the town, representing some of these bodies, should really know well, and it may be my, my deficit that I don't know those things. But I think it would, I think before you have that budget discussion, if we could have some larger discussion about finances and the future of the town, maybe it's wrapped into the discussion of the compact, compact and plan, because a lot of what we do with this town depends on revenues.
One thing we could do is, instead of waiting to do a quarterly update on the budget, maybe we do it now, not meaning today or tomorrow, don't care. But if we did an update instead of quarterly, if we did a monthly, year-to-date, and have that at, in addition, we have that in March and May. Or we can call, especially when we have, if we did an update, a year-to-date, that people would, and so many who are here are all here, that people don't come, they don't ask questions, and we do quarterly reports and.
Sure remember when I first kind of elected to the council, my first budget cycle, this is something that I got particularly rough about. And spent the next year putting towards the other one. So yeah, I couldn't agree more, you know, that, that was sort of an episodic thing and we moved on. I, I will say, just to be clear on record with our dear friends in the paper, that the town is in very good financial shape at the moment. And over the last four years, roughly speaking, we have managed to run somewhat of a surplus. That does not mean that the deficits in this are not correct, it's just that we've been transferring money from our general revenue to cover these deficits and to frankly artificially keep the rates low so they're not passing on the full cost to residents of the town of operating these systems. And this is our slow and incremental step of trying to correct that, because God forbid there be a dip in the general revenues that would put us in a bad way. And of course, there's dealing with the fact that we had a stockpile money to deal with these capital projects that we knew were coming, bills that we knew were coming due. So we've been very good to sort of add additional, put additional money away. And like the treasurer and I's commitment to try and put a full year's operating budget, this is the thing. That's all general commentary to say that, yes, I'm happy to have that discussion, it's something that I spend a lot of time working with the team.
Maybe I could follow it up. We used to get every month, we used to get numbers showing us some of these things like usage of water sewer, expenses, food and lodging, and we don't get that anymore, or maybe it's on the website. But I, I'm a numbers person, I really miss that. I feel I'd like to see the numbers, the receipts, the, you know, basic in balance sheet.
Yes.
Can we get that back again?
We can go back to doing it monthly, we went to, to quarterly, what, two years ago? Because it was just monthly, there was.
It didn't change.
It didn't change, it was quarterly was really more accurate because when bills come in, when bills get paid, if meals and lodging taxes are paid one day, they, because we're on a cash basis. So it's all in the, the way the bookkeeping is and the reports that get spilled out. So that's why we moved to quarterly a couple of years ago. And so that's why I was suggesting that we could do a year-to-date for next month and people could look at it and.
Now we've told the books, there's no reason we can't spit it out.
Exactly.
You're saying how?
Yeah, that was, that was also a big, that was also a big change within the last two years was getting everything somewhat automated because before it was a very, very manual process.
So might I make this a completely different point? On the, on the land, potential lands out, and I, I don't have feelings for or against, but I would say, one, one thing I don't think we touched on was an analysis, if you remove, it's, it's, it's a whole at the moment, if you start removing bits, what does it do to the world, to the value of the residue? So I think it would be important to look at, is that something we want to hold on to in its entirety? And if we're selling to sell bits, what does it mean for the rest?
Unfortunately, none of it's buildable tall right now, but it's, it's part of the discussion.
Mr. Bennett? I would recommend that anybody who is interested in that numbers, we have a budget meeting every year, no one shows up. So welcome, when the town council sits down and goes through their draft budget, it's advertised and come on and we have a great time on Saturday.
Exactly. We might have just. We have the budget, the numbers in advance because we feel more knowledgeable.
Yeah, we can very detailed quarterly reports on our dredging reports. So anyway, I'll just shut up.
Bob might as well be happy to have folks more engaged in that conversation.
Just thank you.
Is there anything wrong with supporting sewer and water through the excess funds that the town now has?
Absolutely. That's why we need to do it, that's why, it's just frankly, I'll cut you.
Joe, will you just do a little?
I'm sorry. There is absolutely nothing wrong with the way that we're balancing the books at the moment. Frankly, we have, I remember the last debate we had about rates is, you know, we are very mindful that there are many residents of the town who are on fixed incomes. And frankly, I've been loathe to increase the rates because, you know, a hundred dollars a month may not be a big deal for some residents, but it is a big deal for others. So, so we've sort of taken a very solid approach to this, so there's no, no reason we can't continue to do so. It just partially against, you know, if there's a downturn in general revenue, we want to be able to keep those systems operating.
Yes, we absolutely have to.
And how much money does the town have in its account at this time?
In the, you know, let me see, I have to subtract out the water and wastewater, we've got about four hundred.
About four hundred, yeah.
How much, four?
Four hundred thousand dollars in our long-term, or what I like to call our regular day fund.
Regular day fund.
Regular day fund, regular day fund. And that's, it really should be at least twice that.
And you'll sort of turn over in the budget, it's around a million bucks. I would be happy if we got to about half of, you know, in an ideal world, we'll hit, we'll hit a full year, but we've been targeting it as getting to a half year's.
Exactly.
Of course, how do our, how do our rates compare to surrounding communities?
The last time we did a check, we're. The last time we did a check, we were slightly below sort of Culpeper and both Culpeper and Morton, which are the, there are no, because there's a sewer system in Ospry, which is, I'll save commentary on that for another time. But the water and sewer systems in Culpeper and Morton, we both, we have much lower, I won't say much, we have lower rates than both of the municipalities.
One thing I would also compare is house and bills are going up at 3%. Some new works that, as we see, electric rates are gonna go up, all your energy rates are gonna go up, so just consider thinking about, thinking about like costs passing on to the people that come, to be a consistent 20 to 30%.
That's important. Because we know how electric bills for the two plants are.
They're gonna keep going up.
Yes.
Anything we want to reduce those power bills, cost money upfront. I mean, I have, I talked to Barbara, I talked to Kale on this issue. I have two ideas that I want to try and run out. There's always endless discussions about trying to find grant money, this type of thing. I don't think we're gonna see anything over the next four years. But there are still opportunities out there. So I want, still gonna try and run out some things. The wastewater plant is a huge energy consumer. That's a difficult one to reduce costs without some major investments. And I had discussions with the SS how we would do that and if we could implement. Yeah, we could cut our power bill considerably, probably, I would say as much as 50%.
But the upfront.
But the upfront cost is pretty significant. At the pump house, it's not as big a bill, but again, it's still a bill. We have a big motor that runs the pump, that pumps all the water. And one of the things we're trying to figure out is a way that when we start that motor, the electric company looks at you and says, what's your peak? And that's how they calculate the building. So whatever your threshold is, your peak on a commercial account. And so if we can reduce that peak, then we can get our rate a little bit better under control. So when we put in the generator, one of the things we're gonna put in is what's called the soft starter. So when you flip the switch, it doesn't go to full load, it brings it up quickly, but it starts to shade that peak a little bit. So it's not gonna cut the bill by half or anything like that, but it will be one of the steps to reduce the cost out there. So, and the pump house is something that, it's a smaller load, so, you know, maybe that lends itself to a renewal large project.
But now on the road, we're looking at some long term potential, but.
Yeah. But like I said, anything you look at is gonna be some upfront cost in capital, equipment, modifications and things like that. Like I said, the tree room plant, the biggest consumer of energy is the air raiders in the basins. They are 25 horsepower motors. Those are big guys. And they suck power and they run meganight. The changes we could put in there, bring that down to 10 horse power motor. But it's a big investment in changing out all the equipment and everything else. And then doing some other things with the controls. So it only runs, components of it only run when the water needs to be treated. If it needs more oxygen, we pump in more air. If it's at the right level, we shut it in off. So again, there's, there's ways to do it. And in fact, if you're Don Earl, who's helped us over the years and stuff, he's now fully retired, although I do have a chance to have an email or two with him occasionally. But he and I talked many years ago about idea changes. And he'd said, yeah, if you can implement those, he said, you could ease them down, 50% of your power bill. So it's there, which is fair enough to pay for it.
I am gonna do this, it's the risk of prolonging this. A lot of people are relatively new here. And sometimes I think the big picture, keep it simple. Correctly, if things are no longer, as I said. But essentially, there's three budgets in this town. One through the wastewater system. And it is a fundamentally, I'm not being critical, uneconomic system in the sense that there's not enough revenues coming in and other costs. It's a function of the size of our town. Not incompetence, not anybody doing anything wrong, it's just, the water is sort of simple. Again, no one's saying anything wrong, but there's only so many people in town, you can only generate so much revenue. If you multiply, the rate's up to cover your costs, I mean, there'd be no town.
Right.
So then there's a third bucket, which is sort of administrative, is the town. And meals and lodging is 80, 90% of that. And the profits, if you will, from meals and lodging minus all the expenses have gone to cover the losses from the two businesses.
That's correct.
There was a time I didn't play to do that. This town is so much better off now than it used to. This town is in good shape. But that's sort of what you've got here is the profits of meals and lodging minus expenses or the revenue minus cover.
They subsidize.
Economic models are fundamentally challenging. So that's always been the case, and it's likely to always be the case. So that becomes a question, to what extent does the town want to try to rationalize water and sewer by doing as good a job as you can economically? And how much money do you have in the other bucket to pay for the difference? And that's sort of, that's what, unfortunately I've left over to put in the bank.
We're just, we're just trying to control the gap, you know? So any, any of the rates that you see in here are solving the problem, aren't coming anywhere close to solving it. Yeah, coming anywhere close to it is, to your point. We're just trying to maintain a reasonable gap between the two things. That's. Any other comments from the council?
Thanks, coming soon.
All right, any, any other business?
Just one thing. I'd like to make a motion to the chairman.
Close the public hearing. All right, that'll close the public, public hearing and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Do you think by saying aye? All right, all right, we are adjourned. We'll see.